Good afternoon, all. I'd like to welcome you and call this meeting to order, please. Can we have roll call Mrs. Byram?
Yes, Mrs. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Hopkins.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Page.
Here.
Mrs. Quinturne.
Here.
Madam Chair, the Clerk certifies the presence of a quorum.
Thank you. May we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, Dr. Hornick, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Having no adjustments, I would entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Motion carries. And at this time, I will turn it over to you, Dr. Hornick.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Excited about this evening's meeting through the transition process and over the last 100-plus days. Strategic planning has been something that's been on my mind and something we know that we're going to have to do. And it's coming at a critical time with me being new to Orange, with all the school divisions coming out of COVID and the new realities that we face there, with the fact that we are also in the process of rolling out a new website on which the strategic plan and the process we're going to use will be publicized. And also with the rightful sentiment of needing to make sure that we have meaningful engagement with the community and our parents. So this is really a perfect time to delve into this work and to really make the strategic plan a document that doesn't sit on the shelf and does guide decisions. Everything from facilities and maintenance to position control, to instruction, and all the other decisions that are made. Having a quality strategic plan is really important. And we're really excited to have Dr. Kevin Kastner here this evening, who has been a very fine educator for a long time, comes highly regarded. I first met Kevin. He probably doesn't remember it, but I met him and his group when they were conducting the Stafford County Public Schools Superintendent Search. And I was one of the, you know, we were one of the focus groups and I was a member of one of the groups that was working with Dr. Kastner and talking about what they would like to see in the next superintendent. And his 14-step plan for engaging and building consensus and trust and transparency with stakeholders is something that I value a lot. And so it is my pleasure this evening to introduce Dr. Kevin Kastner, who is here to give a broad overview of Cambridge Services and how they conduct strategic planning. And I've also sent to you guys just a little bit ago a very detailed kind of proposal overview that you can read at your convenience, too, that include things like letters of reference from other school divisions, both in and out of the Commonwealth of Virginia, letters of reference from other school division superintendents, as well as some background into and a curriculum vitae, so to speak, for Kevin and his associate, Dr. Wayne Harris. So without further ado, Dr. Kastner, it's a pleasure to have you here. Thank you for being here.
It's my pleasure. It's my pleasure to be here. I've been in front of a few boards through the years. And here I almost feel home. I'm from Charlottesville, Virginia. So my drive over here, beautiful drive. I've lived in Albemarle County since 1995, when I first became superintendent in Albemarle County Public Schools. I was superintendent for around 12 years. Since retiring as superintendent in Albemarle, I've been involved in two things. One, I got involved with a company called BWP, which is a large superintendent search group out of the Midwest, and have done, have done 50 to 60 superintendent searches, many, many through the Commonwealth, Stafford being one. But also have done Williamsburg, James City. I've done Arlington. I've done Alexandria Falls Church, Winchester, just a whole bunch of them. And I also have been doing some national searches. I've done Chicago, which is the biggest one I've ever done, Wisconsin, Madison, Wisconsin, Columbus, down in Atlanta. So I have an opportunity to work across the country with school boards in the process of a superintendent search and also doing strategic plans. And I'm now president of Cambridge. I bought the company about 10 years ago. And again, when I do strategic plan, it usually follows usually new superintendents as you're going in and looking at a community and trying to develop a partnership with the school board and the superintendent in your community during a transition. If you look at the proposal and the fact that the proposal is public record, you can see the places that we've worked. And also, you'll see a little bit more about my background, resume. But also, my colleague that will be working with you is Dr. Wayne Harris. Now, Wayne Harris also is a former superintendent. He was superintendent in Roanoke for 11 years. Wayne also was a area superintendent for many years in Fairfax County. And Wayne and I have been partners together in working with school districts, again predominantly here in Virginia. So the part of starting today is we want in this process to be able to earn your trust and the trust of this community in a process that is a good practice for school systems. We're not the only group that does strategic planning. And there are times strategic plan doesn't always have a good reputation. That's not going to happen here. I've done this enough through the years that we have been able to become partners with a superintendent and a school board and a community. And the work that we will do, which will be customized to make it unique to your community, is going to follow the process that I'm going to outline in a brief way today. And what's going to happen is this is going to keep repeating itself over the next several months and in the next school year and the school year after that and the school year after that. At your table, you have a copy of the PowerPoint that you can refer to later. You also have the details that's in the proposal regarding the 14-step process. You also have an article that was recently published by the National School Board Association, in which they invited us to submit the article because of the timing on it, which relates to this, "Using Stakeholder-Driven Strategic Planning to Build Community, Consensus, and Trust." Because school boards and superintendents aren't isolated from your community. They're an integral part of it. But it starts with the partnership of the school board and a superintendent. When you hire Cambridge and you know our process, one of the key elements is the fact that the superintendent and the school board are going to trust us to engage with members of your community, 25 to 30 people, to develop a strategic plan and trust this group that's going to be representative of your community to develop a draft document that in several months they will share with you. It will not be a top-down plan. It will be a plan that will involve stakeholders in your community. And the participation of these people are going to ensure a greater understanding and a greater partnership with people not just within your school district, but people throughout your entire community as you begin to engage a process that will change your culture. You already have a good school system. I know that. But every school system wants to continue to grow and get better. And when you can find a reason to do that and understand the whys of why you do it, then the structures that we're going to be working through are going to enable you to have this to be integral to your entire work, day in, day out, year in, and year out. So it really starts with the fact that strategic planning and excellence is not an accident. It's a result of good intentions and your stewardship as school board members. Your intention are to do what's best for the children here in your county. That's a common ground that we have with every member of your community. And the fact, when you get into this, it gets into execution. It gets into the details. But it needs to first be driven by the why. So why do you do strategic planning? In the Cambridge process, we believe that engagement in engaging your community in meaningful ways, in trying to build partnership and public confidence by transparency. All the work that we're going to be doing is going to end up being on your website. It's going to be available for anyone to see, comment, and perhaps give input if there are certain areas that they either have issue with or they want to continue to support. We also want to create a vision that's just not internal within the system, but it's within the schools and it's within your extended community. It's within your parents, your partnerships, and end to the point where how you're working together for your children. We need to determine which initiatives are working and which aren't working, which is something that's important to address because school systems are changing. Sometimes, school systems don't change, but the world around them changes. And we'll talk about that context tonight. Sometimes, you might have to abandon something. That's not always easy and we're not very good at it. But if we're going to do it, let's do it with all the stakeholders involved, not just central office and the cabinet. We need to talk about spending money and how, if you have to prioritize, are there ways that you need to look at your budget to make sure that your funds are aligned with your initiatives? And at times, to redirect money. And we can talk about that as we go through this process. Again, it's also about courage. It's about courage to confront, if there's an elephant in the room, the courage to look at things that aren't quite as effective and finding a way to find another way to move forward. We're in a world that's changing. Technology, literacy, and how we do school. Here's the question. As we're evolving and we come out of COVID, are we now going to go back to what we did all before? We got into COVID, had kids not in school. Or are we going to see what we can learn from that and now all of a sudden, look at how we do school? The world's changing. I have a daughter that graduated from UVA two years ago. She got a job with Oracle in Austin, Texas. So she moves to Austin. She gets an apartment and she pays way too much money for because she wanted to walk to work because there's the big office not more than a half mile from where she lived. Two years later, she doesn't live in Austin anymore. She lives in Northern Virginia. She never set foot in that office. She does all her work online. Now, unfortunately to her, she's working with India and has to get up at 5:00 in the morning. All the children that we have graduating are now looking at a world that some of the preparation that they had is no longer the same because things don't work the same way. And all of a sudden, each of your students, even as you do school, when they leave your system to be successful, all that's going to have the transition. And what we see is we need to continue to change. We need to know the impact of our shifting demographics and systems as there are not too many systems that are becoming less diverse. They're becoming more diverse. And all of a sudden, you're at a point with new leadership. You have a new superintendent. You want to build upon whatever was done in the past. But again, you as a board hired someone for the leadership qualities that you were looking for. And you did this based upon looking at how you want to find who's going to be the face for your system to move it forward. And you want to do this by curating a shared vision. So the context, a lot of the plans that I did two years ago, I wasn't allowed to then go finish them because I couldn't get in front of a group. When I came back, a lot of the work that we did, we had to change because we never had time in a purposeful way to develop consensus and community. And we had to figure out what we learned. And there were certain things we learned. A lot of it had to do with support system for our children. It had to learn about some of the great things with technology and some red flags with technology. It had to work with the fact that the kid's attention span wasn't the same. My son, when he was online, I had to take his phone away from him and tell him to pay attention. And I know that he went back to school. He had a transition. He was glad to be back. But I think he had to also get backed into the routines. And this is happening with each of our students. Also, we're dealing with issues on some kids that actually didn't keep up. And we had gaps. So the timing for this, I'm going to need maybe some water, please, is to the point that when we're blurring the lines and we're talking about how we do school, we then have to look at, and you know, you have children or grandchildren or you know the kids in the system. And if you ask them the question, how are things changing? And how are we keeping up with it? And then you want to know, well, what does it look like in the classroom? Because eventually, all the work we're going to do is going to have to impact what the children are going to be doing every day with their teachers in collaboration with the central office and your community and all the parents. It gets into what we believe. This statement came from Ron Edmonds back in the early 80s, when people really wondered if schools could make a difference, particularly for children of poverty. He did some research where he found five schools in inner-city Detroit, 90% diverse, 90% poor. And their test scores were equal to a school system called Gross Point, in which 99% of the kids went on to college. No one predicted they could do well, but they did. And what he found, because of leadership, that we know enough to make a difference. And the question is, how do we feel that we haven't so far? There's not many school systems that I've worked with that don't have achievement gap issues. You have them here. We have them in Albemarle. Now, the question in this process, do we have the will? And that's you as a board, you as a superintendent, using this purposeful way and also to repurpose some of the good things you're doing to implement actions and promote the success and well-being for each child? It's not about the 10% that have the gold cords that go across at graduation and they've earned that respect. It's also about the other 90%. And how do you find to the point where you challenge them to make something of themselves? You engage your parents and your community. You're working for workplace readiness skills, not just getting into college. And you're talking about, how do you discover the wealth in each and every child? It's not just about how smart that kid is on the SOL test. It's about how is that child smart? Whether it be in vocational work, being in the arts, athletics, academics, drama? And how do we organize that we're looking at different metrics to celebrate the students with their parents and helping them to find out how they can be the best they can be? We start with this belief, and I don't think there's anyone that's going to disagree, that you want to be good for all kids. But that's a challenge. And frankly, it's not getting any easier. So we have to continue to be better and purposeful. But we're going to need to do it in partnership with the home, the school, and the community. So when we talk about building a strategic plan, we believe that we have to engage that partnership in figuring out how this isn't a superintendent and a school board, but we're taking advantage of the whole issue of a triangle of support and preparing students for success. Now, I've tried to explain the whys. I think we have an agreement. Do you all agree with the whys that I've shared with you? You comfortable with that? Now I want to share with you the what. How are we going to do this? And we're over here in the orange side. I guess orange works here. We're talking about readiness. We're talking about preparing to engage in this process. I'd like, normally we start this in October, November. We're going to do it December and January more, but we still can get it done. And we want to avoid messing up, interfering with holidays. But we're going to get in most of this work after the holidays. We're trying to communicate. We're trying to build participation. We're trying, as we go through this process, that eventually this should be on your website. It should be livestreamed. It's the beginning of a transparent process that we can talk about how this works. The design phase is when we actually develop the plan. And we go through a group of people. We go through action teams. We develop the plan. We bring it back to the board, hopefully asking them to support it, take draft off it, and then we implement it the following year. And that's the gray area. Let's look at it more specifically. We're trying to develop the why. We're trying to generate our capacity to imagine beyond where we currently are to the aspirations of what we want to become. We want to develop trust. We want to get into communication. We want to prepare a representative team to do the work that represents this community. So the Steering Committee is going to do the work. In January, we're going to have a community summit. We're inviting anyone in the community to come out, hear what we're going to try to do, ask for their input, put some of that information on the website. And that's going to be the kickoff officially. But we can't have the kickoff till I'm sure that the superintendent and the board all understand what we're getting into and understand that this is the type of area where everybody has to understand the roles that they'll have. And we want to engage stakeholders as they become ambassadors. So we're trying to set the stage here tonight. One of the things you need to know, when you develop a strategic planning team, over 50% will be members of your community. 50% will be staff. There'll be secondary staff, elementary staff, some central office. There will be four students, usually from the high school, not all seniors and not everyone on the National Honor Society. Four kids that represent composite of your community. We want to bring in parents, business leaders, civic leaders. And we want two board members, which you need to decide. We're looking, what I call, for two-fers and three-fers. We want people that wear more than one hat and have different spheres of influence. If we have someone that's a Chamber of Commerce, they have children in the school, all of a sudden, they become a twofer. But they're also a business person. And then we want to talk about the faith-based community. We want to talk about people that have been part of your PTOs. We want to figure out how we do the parents. We also want to have representation of the community that reflects the diversity of your community. If you have a larger Hispanic population, we want to have representation. Whatever your demographics would suggest. And it's up to the superintendent, working in partnership with the school board, to figure out who this would be because we're going to be asking them to give up three days and then a day later. And then they're coming back the following year. So it's going to be a commitment. And so the strategic planning team and how that all works, we're going to be working on and having that together before the middle of January. So right now, it's a little bit early. And one of the things you need to understand, Judy is going to be working as the internal coordinator. And we have a booklet that talks about step-by-step through the process. She has a thumb drive that we have examples of the booklets we use. And so all of this, the what piece, is organized in a way that's going to maximize both efficiency but also work towards developing a product we're going to be proud of. So in doing this, we then are heading towards, after we have the community summit, actually having a group come together for a period of our three days and work on the design planning of the strategic plan. And I'll talk in a minute about its components. We're going to have action planning groups, which are probably going to be 50 to 75 people. And we're going to have a second strategic planning session. That's the design phase. And in the design phase, the Steering Committee, which is your strategic planning team, And in the design phase, the steering committee, which is your strategic planning team, are going to work several days to talk about strengths, challenges, and aspirations. The one thing you need to understand, we do not vote majority rules on anything. Anything that becomes part of your plan has to have 100% agreement. And that's sometimes pretty tough, because people are going to have difference of opinion, and we're going to find common ground. And if one or two people do not buy in, then we'll keep working to change the language until that happens, so that when you get a strategic plan draft several months from now, there will not be one person who is on that team saying, "I didn't support that." It takes longer, but it also builds the type of ownership that you want to have. So we develop a draft plan. It comes back to the board, it'll probably be in May. Are the plan, we're going to develop some beliefs. We're going to develop parameters or boundaries. We're going to develop a mission statement. We're going to have objectives. It's going to start out for each child will. We're going to have strategies that create a roadmap in the group that will be doing. The action plans in yellow is an entirely different group than the people that did the strategic plan. There'll be an action plan team for each strategy, usually five to seven. That group can have any number of people. You could have 10, you could have 20, you could have far more. In this size of a system, you're going to have some people that are going to maybe be involved in both the strategic planning team and the action team. We want to have the same community involvement in the action teams. And when we do the thing, when we do the plan, you need to understand that we cannot develop a plan that's about your district without talking about your strengths, your challenges, and internal and external factors affecting public schools. You can't develop a plan without the context of the uniqueness of your community. So when the strategic plan team gets together, there are going to be some conversations where we want to make sure there's no elephants in the room. And we want to build upon the good things you're doing, with the whole idea, this isn't a do-over. You're going to have something different, because the school district that develops the strategic plan no longer will be the same school district. And that's the way it should be. Because if you want to move forward, we don't want to just tinker. We don't want to just talk about a fresh coat of paint. And Wayne, my job, is to really work and trying to bring that group together to make sure we do some stretching and maybe, not maybe, going outside of comfort zones, also for you as a board. Because if you're going to get better, you're going to have to challenge things. And when you go against that status quo, that's where it comes into courage. Now, I don't know the details of what it might be. That's going to be representative of the people you're trusting. So the development of the action teams is going to occur over time. That whole work is going to take at least two months, probably February, March. And we want to then bring it back to the board for your approval. But we don't expect you to rubber stamp. We want you to understand, and if you think it's representative, we're going to ask you to take a vote, and it becomes policy. When it becomes policy, and it becomes adopted, and only a majority of the board can change it. And it's important at times when sometimes we are going through issues in different board elections where our entire board might turn over. But if all the people that did the plan, we want to honor the commitment to their work. And if anyone can find something better, then let it show where it improves your plan, and a majority then would rule it. But then the question is going to be, how is this going to be better for the children you're serving? This is an example of one school system that went through this process. First, the picture that's in there represents what that school system looked like. And you're going to see that there's a lot of people that definitely aren't part of necessarily the staff. You're going to see that there's students there. Fortunately, this group couldn't decide on 25. It's a little bit larger. It was a little harder. But let me tell you about this system. This system was in Fort Smith. New superintendent comes in. It's a poor system, 15,000, pretty diverse. Every bond had failed for over the last 10 years with less than 40% passage. When they did the engagement through strategic plan, and they reached out and involved people and got them into schools, the bond passed at 67% for over $600 million. And they had schools that didn't have air conditioning now had air conditioning. Can you imagine a system where half had air conditioning, half didn't? And this was in Arkansas. Gets warm. When you also talk about the needs that they had, they were able to engage people. They were able to have people involved, thickly about the hours that these people put in over time. Strategic planning is an investment. It's not an investment in Cambridge. It's an investment in engaging members of your community. And we're asking them at times, even staff, their day jobs don't get any easier. So when we have them, we want them there to be engaged and understand the importance of this work. Another example is another group in Texas. Again, smaller school system, but in the end, when we talk about creating engagement, that's why we take pictures, we count people, we show that we are walking the walk in our behavior when we talk about collaboration. So this isn't a document that's driven by central office. When we get into implementation, that's the next school year. What the board and the superintendent will need to do in July is look at the plan and prioritize what's most important to start the next school year. I don't know what that's going to be. But that's where this plan now becomes the umbrella for your budget, for your technology plan, for your capital improvement program, for anything that you have in the system. Now, it doesn't mean you change these things, but you want to align them to make sure that they're all working. So when you're getting into the implementation, you're getting to the point where you're taking advantage of the community support. You're taking advantage of the transition of you as a board to go to the next level that you want. And what you're doing is you're believing in this, that people of goodwill, working for common good, will make good choices. The people you choose, while they might have personal agendas, in the end, the common agenda has to be all meets all, is for all kids. And another way of looking at, happened a long time ago with John Dewey, the representatives of the strategic planning team and you as the school board, I would hope you want the best and wisest parents, what they want for their child, that must was the community want for each of the children. Because it's not all the parents that come to school board meetings, and we are responsible for each and every one of them. So when you build upon this, there's a tremendous amount of potential that if we follow this process, I think we're going to be able to build the trust in what you're going to be doing here with the partnership, working with Cambridge, working with members of your It's a pretty dynamic process. And I have to tell you, it gets me excited, and I hope I can have you join me with that as we go through this. At this point, I would like to stop with my comments and try to address any questions
Anyone have any comments or any questions they'd like to ask?
I guess we'd probably eventually know, but the groups that would be selected, how will we go about, how will that selection process happen?
That'll be up to superintendent.
Okay.
But the superintendent should be working with it in concert with the board. The board might even have some suggestions of who you think would be good people to be on it. It gets to a point that there probably going to be more people that want to be on it than we can have, and the reason is, when we do all of our work, we divide the 25 people into five groups. And when we do five groups and we go through each group, if all of a sudden I had 40 people, it just becomes overwhelming and can't do it within three days. So there's going to be some compromises, and we're going to be looking for the two-fers and three-fers. But we also believe, and this is an example of a new superintendent coming in, new to the community, he doesn't have the expertise and the knowledge of the community as you do. So you need to help him in that. And two school board members, you work it out among yourselves who these might be. All the information eventually comes back to the entire board, and we'll report on the process as we go through it.
And I think, excuse me, you had mentioned that these groups are going to be livestreamed? Or...
We would like to do the community summit livestream. The three-day work will not be livestreamed.
And also, go ahead.
I certainly want to see what the community wants us to do. I'm assuming, there's some assumptions here, that we're still teaching reading, writing, and arithmetic.
I haven't found any strategic plan that someone in the community didn't talk about, are we doing the basics? No, it's a, that certainly has to be part of it. And the other thing, sir, when you're developing your strategic plan, and you're going to be looking at some of the evidence of your success, you're going to see how you are performing. You're going to need to see, do you have achievement gaps? And a lot of things that's happening in school systems, some of the systems have had a dip. So somewhere the plan, there has to be, the central focus of the plan gets into instruction. So you cannot avoid that. But the other thing that's going to come into, are issues that we're seeing more of, is addressing student and actually staff wellness.
Staff what?
Staff wellness issues on supporting people are becoming more prevalent in some of our systems. And we're not just talking about students that might be more marginalized, we're talking about all students. And the staff too is important. The other issue that comes into play is a repurpose of talking about technology, not always about just having the means to internet access, but policies for technology where all of a sudden, bad behavior gets addressed and attention span and things. These will all come up.
Yeah, that's what I'm most concerned about. I hear from the business community, I don't know whether it's a professional or just the students that write out of school. Basically, the businessmen are telling me, it's not the, it's not the subject matter that they're concerned about. They just want an employee that will come to work, be on time, and they said they can teach them the job, but if they're not prepared to come to work and be on time, it makes it impossible for the, for the employee.
One thing that I'm sure you're aware of, but the Virginia portrait of a graduate talks about soft skills as much as it talks about the mathematics and the language arts. And we aren't as good at that. So when you notice one of the slides in the belief system, talking about career and workplace readiness, I can assure you, it will come into conversation, because we need to have some of those business leaders that you're hearing from having their voice, and I hope that might be someone you might make sure you recommend to have on the strategic planning team.
Thank you.
I might have missed it, but who authored the article from the NSBI?
I did.
You did? Okay.
Well, in partnership with Frank Morgan.
Okay.
Who also is part of Cambridge. And again, we're getting a lot of input from it, but really, what it describes in a more abbreviated way is just what I've been talking to you about, the process, but it also describes the partnership to develop it, to be community stakeholders.
And so how, how are these groups led? Are they facilitated by the both of you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we will lead the group.
Okay.
I want to say, though, it's not our job to create content. Our job is to facilitate the process. So we, we're neutral in regard to this. We need to trust the people in the system, so we aren't here to talk about, you know, what we might know here or might there. We will share examples, but this has to be totally driven by your people.
I appreciate your presentation and look forward to working together.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for all the information.
You know, I'm really looking forward to, and you know, you're neighbors. You're neighbors, I mean, we've been together with your school district and your people for years, and it's just nice to work close to home. So we're looking forward to it, too. Anything else?
Kevin, thank you very much and to the school board. Thank you, guys. And I think what I hope you saw tonight, the, it was a very targeted reason why we approached Kevin and his group, because the, the things that he values are the things that we've been talking about as far as the engagement, workplace readiness, instruction, decisions about budgeting and expenditures and et cetera. And so it's an incredibly thoughtful process, and it's more work, and it's going to be harder work. And talking about things like, we don't do majority vote, we do agreement, that takes more time and effort to massage and work through, but ultimately, in the end, you do the work upfront, you have a much better product, and which is why the ultimate goal is to have, and like you said, it's not a document, it's, it's a, it's really a template and an umbrella for how we make decisions moving forward and to maximize our return on investment. And so I, the, and just your whole part with engaging the community and having it be meaningful and having at least 50% of the folks involved in this being community members, and we know that is so important and our community is itching for it, is what really, you know, struck a chord with me. So I just really appreciate that and appreciate the board, all the members for their support as well.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope you all have a happy holidays.
You, too.
Thank you, Ms. Cass. Appreciate you. Be okay to continue?
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you, madam chair, members of the board. At this time, I'm going to invite Mr. Honiger to come forward to bring forward some supplemental appropriations.
Yes, good afternoon. I'm here to ask for supplemental appropriation for three different grants, a Title IV grant, security equipment grant, and E-Rates expansion grant. I did provide a brief explanation of each, and does anyone have any question on any of
Anyone have any questions? Hearing none, could I entertain a motion to go ahead and accept this?
That'd be awesome. That'd be awesome.
I move to accept the supplemental appropriations for fiscal year 2023 as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great.
Motion carries. There you go.
Thank you, madam chair, members of the board. At this time, I'd like to invite Judy Anderson to come forward to present the Title I Advisory Committee Membership Proposal.
Good evening, this is the proposed membership for the Title I Parent Advisory. The advisory will serve a critical role of providing input on how funds are used to best meet needs of students in our Title I schools, but also in ways to best engage families. So we plan to meet three times this year with the first meeting in December. And of course, it is listed as tentative because the members of the advisory may, may suggest alternate dates. Thank you for consideration.
All right. And I think this is, okay, just, okay, I see no problems with it. Do you guys, can we entertain a motion to go ahead and?
Yes, ma'am. I make a motion to approve the 2002, 2022-23 Title I Parent Advisory Committee Membership as presented.
Thank you, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. All right.
Thank you, madam chair, members of the board. At this time, I invite Susan A. Little to come forward. And she's going to present her proposed members of the Special Education Advisory Committee.
Good evening. Yes, this evening, these are the individuals that have been recommended by school principals or have reached out indicating that they would like to serve on the Special Education Advisory Committee for this year. The advisory committee does meet four times a year and they give input on our federal grant as well as programs and services for our students with disabilities here in Orange County.
All right. And I see no reason to hold this to the next meeting. If we can entertain a motion to accept this?
Yeah, recognizing some of the names on there, it's, it gives me pleasure to approve or present a motion to accept the advisory committee as presented. Thank you.
Thank you, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. You're welcome.
Thank you, madam chair, members of the board. At this time, I believe we have Mr. Arnold, correct Doug? To come forward to discuss a recommendation for a contract to be awarded for HVAC upgrades to get us off of the two-pipe system at Orange Elementary, correct Doug?
That is exactly right. Very good summary of the whole point. Back on September 30th, an RFP was issued for a design-build project for a contractor to replace the fan coil units in all of the different spaces at Orange Elementary School in the main building with water source heat pumps, which will enable year-round operation of both the heating and cooling functions whenever they're needed and eliminate the fall and spring switch over, at which time in the fall, after the switch over, you can't cool. And in the spring, after the switch over, you can't heat. So this will eliminate that major issue and also eliminate a lot of related problems with condensation and so forth. We received one bid prior to the 2:00 PM deadline on Friday, October 14th. And that bid of $1,585,320 from E-Tech Mechanical Corporation is within the available funding provided by the HVAC grant plus the matching ESER III funds that have been set aside for that, plus about 10% from existing capital and/or redirected ESER funds. In other words, we can pay for the project and we'd like to get it done. Therefore, the administration recommends this project for approval. E-Tech Mechanical Corporation is based in Henrico, Virginia, and has provided several references for copper projects at school divisions in Richmond and in Spotsylvania County. If approved, the work is scheduled to be formed during the 2023 summer break. And it will also include cabinet modifications and countertop replacements, which are needed anyway, but they'll also be changed to accommodate the new equipment. Any questions or comments from the board?
Just a comment, somebody I know was talking about the changeover this year with the, the warm weather. And so they were excited to see that this was on the agenda for tonight.
Thank you. It's been a good year to demonstrate the need, that's for sure.
Well, if there are no objections and no questions of Mr. Arnold, Mike, you want to entertain a motion?
Absolutely. Like to make a motion that we accept that award of contract for the HVAC upgrades.
Okay. A second please.
One second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you, madam chair, members of the board. And then Mr. Arnold will stay put and provide an update on some ongoing facility projects.
Thank you, Dr. Horneck, members of the board. First project is of course, the Gordon Barber Edition, which is progressing nicely. Since we last met, they have completed the footing excavation and concrete and masonry for the footings and foundation walls, structural steel and decking for the project. And the under slab plumbing is getting underway with electrical. And actually, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, the concrete slab for the upper deck where the mechanical equipment will go was poured. So we have that floor ready and it will also provide partial weather protection for the ongoing part of the project. And then of course, the next big step will be to get a roof put on. Onto Orange County High School. We had some roofing problems with the learning cottages. And the intent there is to get at least three to five more years out of those buildings. And to do so, we've replaced all of the seams on the roofs. We did not replace the entire roofs, which would have been necessary if we wanted to make those a permanent facility. So there you go. Also at Orange County High School, as well as here, you may have seen the big tree that came down back in, in July, that we finally got cut up and hauled away. And we also had a very large pine tree to come down at the north wall of the high school and crush the canopy to the bus loop. That's all been repaired. There was some lighting damage, lightning damage to the track, which has also been repaired. We had to get the same contractor back to fix that, that did the original work. There was a damaged fence over there as well, and all of that also has been repaired. At Locust Grove Middle School, the lighting project there is complete. Replaced all of the lighting and controls and sensors in the classrooms at Locust Grove Middle with two-by-four flat panel LED mounted in the existing ceiling. The work was done after hours with minimal disruption to school activities. And therefore, we didn't have to wait till next summer.
Did ABM do that?
Was that work, ABM?
Did ABM do that?
No, that was a contractor that was approved. And they, you know, it's a separate contract from ABM. However, ABM is looking at the rest of the building that did not involve the classrooms for possible LED conversion there. So you'll be hearing that, about that in a little while. The security vestibules, we received a very partial grant for the security vestibules. So we were only able to do it at, at Locust Grove Primary and Prospect Heights. We're not sure why they picked those two schools and rejected the high school and Locust Grove Elementary, which is the identical building to Prospect Heights. So I'm not sure of their logic, but we will get those two schools done. Also at Prospect Heights, we have windows on order for the cafeteria. And as some of you may know, the tall casement windows at these two buildings, even though they're only 20 years old, we've had several issues with those windows. Basically, they swing out and they drop a little bit where they're very hard to close. And we picked the worst ones, which is that cafeteria. We'll get those done as kind of a pilot program for replacing the other windows. Last but not least, actually, second to last, the pillars are on order for Locust Grove Elementary and Prospect Heights. They're currently expected to be delivered for Locust Grove Elementary in April and for Prospect Heights in August. Locust Grove Elementary School, we replaced many blinds in about half the school, replaced them with shades like we did next door at Locust Grove Primary last year. And we'll do the other half in, in the summer, either in June or July. Okay, that's all I got. Any questions or comments from the board?
Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Appreciate that update.
All right, thank you, Mr. Arnold. And then if you guys are good to keep going, this is another somewhat lengthy one coming forward. And so we will have Dr. Anderson and Dr. Honig come forward. And this is going to be the first in a two-part series. Second part coming in December, this is an overview of our core curriculum, K-12.
Good evening again, and thank you for the opportunity to share one of our favorite topics, which is the curriculum for the school system. And so that is a very large topic with a lot of intricate components. But tonight, we're going to strive to provide a general overview of the curriculum. And there's also a link to supporting documents. So throughout the presentation, you'll see snapshots of those documents as we explain each of those. So tonight, we're going to talk about the core curriculum, which has been mentioned. And that will include English, mathematics, science, and history and social science.
So we're going to look at four components of curriculum. The Virginia Standards of Learning in the upper left-hand corner, we'll start there, are the basis for the curriculum in all core content areas. Then the VDOE curriculum framework expands on standards that, and teachers use these standards to understand the depth and the level of thinking required for students in order to successfully master each of the standards. And the teachers also use the curriculum framework when developing their pacing guides for each course. Next, the assessments, both standardized and teacher-developed, must align to the depth and level of thinking that was outlined in the curriculum framework. And finally, the classroom instruction is the delivery of that curriculum. The graphic in the center that you see will be discussed later because it represents the multifaceted approach to the design and delivery of curriculum in Orange County. Laura? As we go through the presentation, note that all the areas, the curriculum, the instruction, and the assessment must all be in alignment in order for students to be the most successful.
So we think about curriculum, that's developed at a very large degree at the State Department of Education. And so we have those documents that kind of include our standards of learning and the curriculum framework, but also some example activities and also assessments. And then we go through a process of working that down to the classroom level where teachers have some flexibility to meet the needs of our students. So every summer, our teachers work on curriculum. So we have representatives from the schools who come in at each grade level and they work on each of those core areas. So we take what we've received from the Department of Education and then we make it our own as a division. So those are then developed into units that our teachers design. We're going to show some pacing guides from that later. At the school level, after that's been developed, the teams at the school have a lot of discretion in terms of the lessons that they plan together. You've heard Dr. Horneck talk about professional learning communities and the emphasis on that. So those teams of teachers can really gather around those standards and the guides that we've created to determine how to best deliver that to their students. Beyond that, in each classroom, teachers have specific needs within their classroom, which allow them to then fine-tune what they've come up together with as a grade level and work on that at the teacher level, working all the way down to the individual needs of students in the classroom. And so we're going to share some of those resources and documents that guide that work, including what's provided at the state level, some examples of what's been developed by our teachers in the summer across the division. And then we'll share some of the ideas that we have for assessment as well as those that are required by the state. So yes, we're going to start with our pre-K program because that's a little bit different than our K-12. So for our pre-K program, the Department of Education has established a set of standards for students. These are very holistic in terms of the whole child because we are talking about our earliest learners. So addressing everything from how children learn through play at those really early ages to those areas that are academic. So they have guidelines around literacy, reading and writing, mathematics, science, and social studies, even for our youngest learners. So those are outlined for you here. And you'll see this is the beginning of what you heard earlier in the presentation around the profile of a Virginia graduate, around those five Cs that we've talked about before, which require students to have experiences with communication, collaborating with others, creativity, being good citizens, and critical thinking. So you can see those even reflected for our youngest learners. And of course, the health and the physical development component is also extremely important. And we have staff members who are involved in the resources to support that as well. In pre-K, we use a very pre-K friendly curriculum called Frog Street. And within that, there's a scope and sequence for all those areas that we talked about, pacing for the teachers, lessons that they can deliver, and assessments that they can deliver. However, there is flexibility for our teams of teachers to make adjustments based on the needs of our students. They may in particular have a group of students who are coming in with deficits in some of those areas that they may need to strengthen. So there is room for flexibility, of course, and also to monitor as the students progress through the year. So those teams also meet during the summer and throughout the school year to make adjustments to the lesson plans and units that they're teaching. And those adjustments may be anything from the order that units are taught down to the lessons that are administered and how they're assessing the students.
So we're going to start now with K through 12, the English SOLs. Each English SOL has strands that you will see woven throughout K through 12. They are communication and multimodal literacies, reading, writing, and then research. This is an example of a curriculum framework that we talked about, which is that taking that standard and expanding it out to be very specific for teachers when they are trying to design their lessons and assessments. So you'll see the standard is written at the top, the 11.3, that's the basic standard. Under it is an expanded, all the different parts that go along with that. You will see in all of these curriculum frameworks that we're going to show you essential understandings. These are things that the students should be able to do. And the essential knowledge, skills, and processes are also things that the students are expected to be able to do if they successfully master this standard. So this is an example of a high school English curriculum framework. Okay?
And here you see an example of a kindergarten standard. It's outlined in the same way, that's consistent K-12. So again, the teacher has the standard available. These teachers work from this in the summer as well when designing the units, what the students need to know. And then it gets very specific in terms of exactly how the students demonstrate what they have learned, what they are required to do. So the teachers can use this as a basis for the types of activities and the learning targets that are established for their students. This progression by grade is for the reading standard and it's only one portion of it. And this is provided by the Virginia Department of Education. This is really critical in our work with the curriculum and in the daily work with, with teachers as well because this outlines for teachers when particular skills or concepts are introduced in that K-12 progression, and then when they will know that the students have been exposed to that. So if they're seeing some deficits, they can actually look back to when was that introduced to students? How is that standard crafted? And be able to fill in some of those gaps. And they also know what to expect. It also allows them to know what they're preparing their students for for the subsequent school year.
Next, we have the K-12 math SOL strands. They're listed on the right. All throughout K through 12, you'll see number and number sense, computation and estimation, measurement and geometry, probability and statistics, and patterns, functions, and algebra. But they also have process goals over here, which are also processes that students are expected to be able to do when they're working within math. So we'll see those as you go on. And the next slide. And the next slide, this is an example of a grade eight math curriculum framework. The SOLs, of course, at the top, then it's broken out for the teachers where they can really understand what it is that the standard is asking the students to do. You'll notice what we do with teachers when we're doing curriculum planning is looking at those verbs and the nouns that are in there to make sure. That's what we were talking about earlier with alignment. It's really important that teachers understand if it's something is just to be identified or if it's really to be like at a higher level of cognitive thinking. So they have to look at all of those things. And then over here, again, you have those skills. So whatever the teacher writes out as their lesson, their assessment also needs to assess at that same level. Next, you'll see, this is an example of Algebra I, same thing, same parts to this. And Algebra I, of course, as you know, we teach that at both the middle and the high, so we also have to make sure that that matches because those students are getting a high school credit. Middle school, it needs to match the same types of expectations that students at the high school level have. So this, again, is the standard, helping the teacher to understand the standard as well as what are the essential knowledge and skills that students should have to be successful. Next.
This is an example of a fourth grade math standard in the strand Probability and Statistics. So you can see that it's very detailed in terms of what the students need to understand, and again, the skills that they need to be able to demonstrate. And as Renee said, those are used to design the tasks as well as the assessments for the students. So these are the basis for the math instruction. This document's very helpful. Again, this one is also provided by the Department of Education. This is also very useful within the school when the principals are leading their PLCs in terms of looking at data and looking at their instructions. So this is just a snapshot. This includes the strands Measurement and Geometry, Probability and Statistics, and Patterns, Functions, and Algebra. There's also a chart like this for Number Sense and for Computation and Estimation. So again, it shows, for example, for a particular concept, shows when that concept first shows up in the standards and then how it is built upon throughout the subsequent years. So for example, this one on Data Representation Interpretation is first introduced in kindergarten, and then you can see that that carries all the way through with math instruction.
This is an example of the K-12 Science SOL strands. You'll see they have both the content strands and literacy components. And if you look at the top, you'll see that is the Scientific and Engineering Design Process. That is embedded throughout all of the Standards of Learning for Science K through 12, where students should be able to define, brainstorm, research, test, retest, and pretest that engineering design process, and then communicate results and findings. So that, I put that there so you can see that that is also built throughout all of the standards in science. So the next slide shows you an example of Biology. This is, again, same parts that you've seen before. They talk more about central idea, and then they even put the vertical alignment within the standard for the sciences. You'll see enduring understandings, and then the essential knowledge and practices. So this is an example of high school science.
And if you guys take a look and go back to that, Laura, if you look at the last bullet under Essential Knowledge and Practice, you see this more in the humanities and in science when you get verbs like describe and explain, right? Describe the structure of enzymes and explain their role in acting as catalyst. And this is where the alignment piece comes in, and this is where Judy and Renee and our curriculum and instruction folks, working with the teachers to make sure that when we are teaching and assessing students, are we really making them describe and explain? Because that is how they are going to be tested on the end-of-course exam. And so if we haven't, if they have been taught to identify it but not actually describe it or explain it, we're out of alignment, and we're not setting them up for success. So this constant really honing in on the verbs and what the student is being asked to do from the standards is really important as we're building our lessons and our unit plans to make sure. And these guys will get into it. It also impacts the pacing, how much time, because all of these standards truly aren't created equal. Some of them are very knowledge and fact-based, some of them are really higher-level skills. And you know, so you're always trying to also figure out how much time you're going to allot to address each standard as well.
A lot of it comes down to what is the definition of the word describe? If the 30 students have a different interpretation of what describe means, they're not, they may have the knowledge, but they can't put it down on paper because they don't understand what the word means. And be honest, I'm not sure to describe science and describe math, it may be totally two different things. So to me, when it gets down to testing, one of the things that was a little picky with me is how do you define the word? So I think we need to concentrate on that so that the student understands what, when they use a specific word, what they're actually asking for.
Couldn't agree more. That's exactly the work that is constantly being evaluated and reassessed and based on how we do, and we look at our, we use our formative assessments that we have that focus on this to see how the students are progressing, to make sure they actually are addressing those essential understandings. So 100%.
And this is just another example of the science standard, again, from elementary. You can see it's designed the same way as the previous one that you saw. You'll notice in the far right, those last two bullets really center around students being involved in doing science, so conducting scientific investigations, doing things that are hands-on.
And then, of course, when we look at the impact of COVID, and when we weren't in school, and it was really, I mean, when you look at a subject like science, it's really hard to deliver some of those hands-on lab experience. So this is where, when students were coming back, some of these things that they would have gotten in that third-grade example, it was delivered in a way that they didn't, it wasn't necessarily experiential. They might have heard it, but didn't actually experience it. So now that's the gap that we have to go back, and the standards keep moving, but we also have, we also have gaps in the understanding based on the fact that we didn't have them in front of us to conduct these actual experiments and to do this hands-on work. So you're trying to, you're trying to rob Peter to pay Paul to get time to go back and fix what was missed, but also, fourth grade is happening as we speak, and the fourth-grade standards haven't changed because we didn't get all the way through third grade. So that's a little bit of the problem that all schools are facing.
And the last is the History and Social Sciences, and they have the same strands, essential skills, essential understandings, essential knowledge, and possible learning experiences. So you can go on to the next. This is an example of World History I at the high school level. A lot of these have skills for historical thinking, analysis, geographical analysis, economic design-making. A lot of the standards for history a few years, this last revision before the one that they're currently doing, really did focus around skills, like, for example, these types of things about historical thinking and propaganda, but geographical analysis and not just memorizing the states, but analyzing things by looking at maps and looking at data and things like that were really emphasized quite a bit. Next, we see Virginia Studies.
This is an example of a Virginia Studies standard, and this is taught in fourth grade currently in our division. But you can see, again, it's very nicely laid out in terms of what the students need to be able to understand and do, but also some suggested experiences that may be helpful to them in their learning, and even an example of a model that the teacher could use in class. So there are a lot of resources that are provided for us at the state level. In addition to these, there are also a lot of activities that the teachers can use and assessments as well, quick checks and things like that that can help us in our daily work. So that's the big picture of what we're provided by our State Department of Education. And now we're going to move into how this really comes to life for our teachers. So we're going to share some pacing guides now. These were created by our own teachers with the help of the curriculum specialists here who are coordinators in those core areas. And this will show how some of that's packaged together and then shared with other teachers across the division for consistency in terms of the delivery of the instruction.
That's weird.
There should be a chart on there.
It skipped something. There we go, go back one more.
So this is an example from a third-grade unit that's on the water cycle and earth's resources. So you'll see on here, when our teachers develop, it's a lot of work in the summer, and they do this at each grade level, and they develop ways that our teachers can put this together and teach this in terms of units. So this is, these are the two standards that are being addressed at the top. And then there's a suggested amount of pacing, and we do that because the teachers are using their own expertise when we develop that based on the experiences that they've had before. If they've had input that some units may have taken longer, that may be adjusted during the time that they're working on this, or it could be condensed. Or some of it could depend on what Dr. Horne just mentioned in terms of some of the standards are weightier than others, or there's just more to that in terms of maybe the content, but maybe also the level of cognitive demand there. So they make those decisions based on their experiences and their expertise. The key vocabulary is identified for the teachers because that is critical to students' understanding. We know that they have to have a good handle on the vocabulary. And then you can see that they move there through the content that's laid out in the standards to the skills, and then highlight the scientific and engineering practices, the actual doing science, for example, in the science. The resources are listed there with links for the teachers, so hopefully that saves a lot of time in terms of teachers accessing what they'll need to teach those standards. Those resources are those that are vetted through the VDOE-approved list of resources as well as our own selection committees here that are comprised of our teachers and administrators. And just as a reminder, those are then put out for public comment with opportunity for parents also to comment before those are adopted. And so all of those are outlined for them, as well as some key assessments. There are assessments that are devised at the division level, but there's also flexibility for teachers to develop their assessments, in particular those in their PLCs, how they are monitoring learning throughout the course of a unit. So there's formative assessments that Dr. Horne mentioned.
The next example, this is a high school English 11 pacing guide, has many of the same parts. You can see that these, the SOLs and the strands that they're going to be covering here, it will take three weeks, the content that they're covering, as well as the skills that the student will need to be able to be able to do, and some examples of activities. These aren't exhaustive of all activities that are done, but they, these are very helpful, like, for example, when we get a new teacher to the division to be able to have this pacing guide upfront, so they can then go through it before they even start the year or come here. And it really helps them to see what activities have been used and have been approved by our teachers who are already teaching it. And you'll see over under the resources, those are links, so they can link right to some activities that they already use, or the resources, or the readings, so that they're there for them. So that's just an example of how you take, yes, go ahead.
The resources, and you said that the parents get, have access to that and be able to say whether they like it or not. How often does that go out? Is that every year at the beginning of the school year, or how does that work?
I'll speak first to the ones that I mentioned earlier. That was at the time of adoption. Those are out for review. However, parents are always welcome to review any of the curriculum materials.
Same thing here. These are the readings that were approved when we adopted the textbook, and most of these come straight from the textbook. And we also have lists at each, with English especially, starting in middle school, and I think you have it too, but starting from six through 12, we have the list of things that people teach within that course. And so parents can always request to see that, but we also have a syllabus where it is listed on there, but it is that you'll be reading. And at any time, if a parent, you know, might, there might be something on there that they wouldn't want their child to read, they can request an alternate reading assignment, and our teachers have those available. So it's usually about every six years when we adopt like a new textbook or a new series or a new resource.
And so the pacing guides are available for each of the content areas for all grade levels. Now we're going to transition into just briefly a bit about assessment for learning and of learning. So we know that assessment's very important, not only to determine what students have learned and for our accountability measures, but also as we're going through a unit of instruction, the primary goal of assessment is to determine how do we need to adjust that instruction on a daily basis, based on the assessments that teachers are constantly doing each day in class as they're instructing. And this is just an example of some of those assessments. We've talked about the SOL test before. Along with that, we are also, we have access to SOL test blueprints, which, again, will reflect which of those standards may be concentrated more heavily on SOL tests. Performance-based assessments, which really bring together those skills that we were talking about earlier, that we even mentioned about what's being looked for in the workforce. So the skills that are the softer skills where students can integrate information, and they can also then package that in a way that may be different from a multiple-choice test. So they're able to respond to a more authentic task in order to perform on those. We have division-level assessments that are unit assessments that are consistent across the division, and then, of course, teachers can develop their own assessments within their teams. And then we also have some other assessments that are used to measure student growth as well, and those are listed on the far right. We even begin those in kindergarten with the Virginia Kindergarten Readiness Assessment, and that's focused on the academic area of math, in addition to PALS, which is literacy.
Now we're going to get into the final piece, which is when planning our instructional lessons. This is the graphic that, a little larger so you can see it better, that was on that earlier slide. So when in planning instructional lessons, classroom teachers have to consider many factors. So here, this graphic represents our instructional framework used for planning. So if you look in the center, you'll see the words Visible Learning. So all teachers are asked to develop lessons utilizing visible learning, research-based practices. And basically, what that means is that teachers think about their lessons through the eyes of their students. So they want to make it very clear what the students need to know and what, and then how they will know that they're successful. So they write learning intentions and success criteria for each lesson that they do every day, and it should be visible in the classroom and talked about, and the student, it should be very clear to the student what they're going to learn today and how they'll know that they're successful. So additionally, the teachers must ensure that the lessons are relevant, rigorous, and engaging, and they must also encompass this outer circle that represents those five Cs that Judy already mentioned. Teachers try to incorporate those throughout all lessons when appropriate. So there's all, there should be examples of times when in a lesson, students have the opportunity to collaborate with others. Communication should be running through all of them at all times. Citizenship, creative thinking, collaboration, what am I, I'm missing one.
Communicating.
Creativity? I don't remember. But anyway, those five things should be embedded throughout everything that we do. Today's presentation was basically meant to provide an overview of our curriculum that our teachers are using. So they've worked together with our curriculum specialist here at TAC to develop a pacing guide and design lessons for students that cover all the state standards. So in this presentation that Laura will be sharing with you is this document link. And Laura, if you'll click on that, it's going to take you into a drive where we have organized this for you. You'll be able to look at all of the content areas, starting with pre-K all the way up through grade 12. If you'll click on, let's just say, look at the math, for example. Once you click in that, you'll see we've broken it out by elementary, middle, and high. If you'll go into like just one of those, it doesn't matter which one. We've copied the curriculum frameworks from the DOE for you, so you won't have to go to the Department of Ed and then back and forth. And then scroll up a little bit if you could. You'll see here pacing for seven, eight, that's our math seven, eight class, Algebra I, middle school pacing guide. You'll have that right there that you can look at and more depth. And if you back back out, Laura, to the curriculum review piece, additionally, those, I also included for you the OCHS Program of Studies for this school year, just so you can kind of see which science classes we have, which math classes we have. Make it a little bit easier all in one place. So that concludes our presentation. Do you have any questions? Do you have any questions?
Could you go back to the, one of the very early slides where you talked about math curriculum?
I don't know which slide. Try thirteen. And then fourteen.
No, the thirteen.
Thirteen?
But you gotta make it bigger, I can't read that from here.
Yeah, you're not in present, so it's harder to see. There we go, that.
Okay. I'm looking at the left-hand column, one, two, three, four, about down there, does that say reasoning?
Reasoning, yes.
Okay, I, I'd love to see that there. I sort of call it logical thinking, but I want everybody to understand when you study geometry, it's not that A squared plus B squared equals C squared. That's a fact in a right triangle. That's not reasoning. So if your geometry teacher is just teaching you A squared plus B squared equals C squared, that teacher is not teaching reasoning, and that's not what they're supposed to be doing. There's nothing, there's nothing wrong with knowing that fact, but that geometry course is to teach reasoning and logical thinking using the context of straight lines and triangles and circles. But if the main purpose of doing, because a lot of the students will say, this doesn't make any sense because we never see this in the real world. And they're right. It's a world that we've created, human beings have created, to teach logical thinking. That's what geometry is about, and I thank you for having reasoning up there.
And in conclusion, I would just like to add that the curriculum is always a work in progress. Our teachers are always working to make it stronger, more tightly aligned, and of course to provide more options and more activities, lessons, great experiences for students that are available to their peers, they share all the time. So we could not do this work without the amazing teachers that we have.
And also, when you look at the pacing guides, and like, let's say one of you has a student in a class, and you look at a pacing guide, and it says, well, it's December 1st, that this says they should be here. They are like fluid a little bit, because, you know, you don't know what, like you said, the gaps that we have, so we may be a little behind, or might be ahead of the students. So those pacing guides are just that, they're a guide, and they're always being revised based on the students who are in front of the teachers at the time, so. Any other questions?
So is it up to the teacher what like online curriculums are used? I know you had mentioned Frog Street for pre-K. I've heard Second Step being thrown around. So is that up to the individual teachers, or do we have any set programs that OCPS strictly uses?
We do have set programs that we've adopted. For example, Discovery Ed for science, that's one, that's one that's adopted. It has both online resources as well as text resources and hands-on kits. Teachers do have some discretion, of course, they work within their PLC, and then with their principals in their buildings, if it's something that's outside of what we've adopted as a district.
Okay, and you probably, probably don't know this, but is Discovery Ed and Frog Street the only two curriculum program, no? Or just those are two?
Each content area, we have adopted texts for those. And generally, those are online materials as well as hard copies. So we have something in particular for math, science, language arts, and for history. We use Envision for math, yes, and we have Benchmark Workshop for language arts at K5.
And, and most of the textbook companies now have, like, let's say we, we were to adopt a textbook, they come with an online component too, so that you have both.
Okay.
And that is very handy for teachers if they're planning from home, to be able to access their manuals digitally.
And there are also like supplemental programs that we've adopted, such as Dreambox Math. That's one, that's a supplemental math program. We, Success Makers, one for the middle school, that's something that will enhance remediation for math and writing. No red ink, that's another program for helping with remediation in writing. So there are different programs like that.
Right.
Most content areas have at least one. Any other questions?
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Well done. You can tell you put a lot of time into that. Thank you.
We love it.
Yes, they were all over. And then, and then we will, when we get to the December 19th work session, they're, they're quickly gathering to do a, a similar focus on, connect our elective courses. And so there, there are certainly some, the process is certainly the same, but it's, you know, instead of SOLs, you have competencies and other, other guiding principles that are established that we have to meet. So it's, there's nuances that are different, but the process is largely the same. And so, and that's, and I want to thank you guys, too. That's a massive undertaking to try to, to highlight that. So I think you guys did a great job of giving, giving an overview and then providing additional information. So we're happy to answer any more questions in time as well, of course, but, thank you.
And please let us know if, once you get into the link, if there's something that you can't see. We think we have all the settings correct, but you know how sometimes you miss something, just let us know and we can.
So this, this particular presentation is, this, this will be available on the website as well for everybody else to see? So I guess my question is, if we decide, once we have the, the second part of this, if we go into January, maybe we propose to have some type of Q and A, whether parents send in questionnaire, questions to us, and then we ask you the questions, or, or something like that, whether, public comment may be a long process if we did that, but if we had the questions in advance that we could ask that evening, or something along those lines, I think would be helpful.
We're here to help any way we can.
Perfect, thank you.
I'm, I'm just assuming that everything is presented, some, some things that are presented to us here are already hooked to our, our agenda, but it's just my personal feeling. If we have something presented here, that it should be like this one, hooked up to this meeting so that the public can go back and see it.
Absolutely, and it will be.
Yeah.
It just wasn't on this, it wasn't on the agenda on Thursday. So yeah, I imagine that once they go back to it, it will be on there, yep.
I, well, I, I'm just repeating myself, but anything, this is a public meeting. Anything's presented on the screen for everybody to see. At, at, you know, by the time, give Laura a day or so to get it all hooked up, but when you go back and look at this meeting, I expect to see, I would expect to see everything there.
Yes, and we have, we've given that to Lauren, she's.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. That brings us to the end of reports and recommendations.
Thank you. And at this time, Ms. Byron, would you like to review calendars?
Sure. I apologize for the look of these. I was, I got a little creative before Thanksgiving, and now looking at them, I don't like them at all, so.
Oh, I like them.
I'll reramp the formats.
I like it, Laura.
But in December, we have our regular meeting on the 5th. I believe there is a governor's school, a Blue Ridge Virtual Governor's School meeting on the 7th. And then we will have our final work session for the year on the 19th. And winter break is the 21st through the 30th. And then if I.
I'll just make a comment. I'm going to be out of town the week of the 5th, so I will miss the meeting on the 5th. And I've arranged to take part in the Blue Ridge Governor's School by a Zoom type of meeting. I'm not going to chair the meeting, I'm going to have the vice chair be there and chair the meeting, but I'll take part in the meeting. And with the approval of my board colleagues, I'll be able to vote on items as they come up.
And then, let's see, for January, uh, let's see. We have a student holiday, teacher workdays on the 2nd and the 3rd, and we will have our first school board meeting and the annual reorganization on the 2nd. Student holiday on the 16th, and all staff holiday on the 16th. Prep board meeting on the 20th. It looks like they've moved those to Fridays now. And then for anyone who would like to attend the VSBA Capital Conference in Richmond, is that, I believe I have that on the wrong, that should be on the 30th, and the work session is on the 23rd.
Okay, yeah.
So I just need to move that.
Okay, the work session's not the last one.
Right, because I, I did that so that people could attend that Capitol Conference if they want to, and not have to rush back, because that's in Richmond.
Okay, thank you.
And so the Capitol Conference is on the 30th?
Yes, yes.
The Capitol Conference is the 30th?
Yes.
Okay, and then on the 23rd, I will be away on a work assignment, so I won't be present.
Okay. All righty. And then if we go look at December 5th's agenda, I will update this. We will have some recognitions that evening. We will also have our first public hearing to get some input from the community on the budget, and that has been advertised as required. And then we have a public comment session on the S R 3 grant and plan, as required by that plan. And then we will have normal public comment. So we have three opportunities there. And then I will update all of these that we've already taken action on.
All righty. Thank you, Ms. Byron.
You're welcome.
All righty, now, can we have closed session certification, please?
Pursuant to 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, the Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting for the following: Discussion of Personnel or the Performance of a Division Employee as Authorized by Section 2.2-3711A-1 of the Code of Virginia for Resignation, Termination, Transfer, Employment Salary Adjustment, and Retirement of Employees.
All righty, can I have a second?
You have a second?
With that, we're in closed session.
We're supposed to.
I don't think anybody's going to vote not to go in closed session.